Good evening and welcome to the board meeting. Thank you for your patience. We're only two minutes late. That's probably a record. I'd like to report up from closed session. The first one, it is the recommendation of interim superintendent Stephanie Nella that Lindsay Lopez will be appointed a principal at Antioch Middle School effective the 2016-2017 year. It was a unanimous vote. She can? Okay, how fast can she get a text? But she'll still get texts. I know how this room works.
I have not allowed a motion and second.
Sorry. Okay, motion made by Navarro, second by Rulik, favor four, and opposed zero. Okay, next is the recommendation of the interim superintendent Stephanie Nella that Joseph Engler will be appointed manager of technology effective for the 2016-2017 year. Motion by Roy, second by Vincent, in favor four oh. And he doesn't work here, so you guys don't have his number. You can't text him. He's outside. He's coming from the outside. The board took action to terminate a classified employee effective May 26th. Motion by Vincent, second by Navarro, motion is four zero. And then the last reported out from early closed sessions, item two, conference with labor negotiator agency designated negotiators, Board of Education President Diane Gibson-Grey and Board Member Vincent, employer organization, unrepresented employee superintendent for 2016-17. The board has narrowed the search to a final, as no decision on actual appointment has been made until the completion of negotiations on the terms of employment. The final decision will come with approval of the new superintendent's contract, which should be scheduled on or before June 22nd, 2016 board meeting. No candidate names will be released pending agreement on the contract and review of any additional information that may come to the attention of the board. All those interviewed have been notified of developments which have occurred to date. Negotiation list of the finalists will accrue twenty now in the board meetings. The board will ask its attorney to develop a proposed contract with Board President Diane Gibson-Grey and Board Member Vincent. So that's reported now in closed section. Session, can you reestablish the quorum?
Yes. Good evening. Board Member Deborah Vincent.
Present.
Board Member Fernando Navarro.
Present.
Board Vice President Walter Rui.
Present.
Board President Diane Gibson-Grey.
Present. If I rise for the flag? Lulu.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the true republic where we just stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the approval of the board minutes. Unless I misread them, we were all here, and we can take them collect as a whole unless you guys would like to do them separately. What is the pleasure of the board?
Most of all, it's fine for me.
Is that a motion?
So, word.
So, a motion by Mr. Navarro is, I mean, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rui. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Superintendent report.
Yes, I wanted to provide an update regarding some of the metrics on our LCAP to kind of give you a progress report of where we're doing with some of our indicators that we have to date. We had tremendous one-year growth in our graduation rate of nearly 7%, which is phenomenal. We've never in the history of this district had that large of a gain. So, that's a big effort of our students, our families, and definitely our staff. So, congratulations on that. We are now above the state average, and the state had a 1%, so we outpaced them by quite a bit. We have preliminary results from our early assessment program, which is the program that 11 students take to see if they're college-ready. So, when they enter college, they won't need remedial courses. And currently, the preliminary data is showing a 10% increase in English Language Arts and a 5% increase in mathematics. So, we still have some ways to go, but that's a pretty substantial gain. Let's see. The number of eligible graduates, students who are graduating eligible for the UC CSU right out of high school, has increased 11% in the last four years, so showing steady growth. And, you know, we instituted positive behavior interventions and supports at our four middle schools two years ago, and the suspension rate is down 40% since 2013. So, would that be three years ago? Sorry. Since 2013, which is very significant. And our second cohort, which are the 11 elementary schools that have used PBS regularly, their suspension rate is down 62% over that time period. Pretty incredible. And finally, number of people who like us on Facebook is up in the last four months, is up 71%. So, there you have it.
You know, and that indicator's Facebook, yay!
And finally, I did want to say that the draft of our LCAP is now up for the public to view. We'll have our hearing at our next meeting. So, it's in draft form. Every woman is welcome to write back to me, and I will respond in writing.
Great, thank you. And we have student delegates. If you notice, we have an unusually large amount of them here, and that's because you don't have to report anything to us. We get to thank you for all that you've done and the number of times you've come and seen us. I do this by outlook and peckle. And then who's a senior? Just raise your hand. Anybody? Okay, those of you who are seniors, just tell us where you're going to go, you know, or what you're going to do when you leave us. I'm sure you're going to do something wonderful. Those of you who are juniors, just tell us what you need for the summer, if it's something fun. What I'm going to do is ask, you go down the first, and then you go down, and you go down. So, we'll keep this going, and then we'll just take one picture. I'm all about efficiency. Okay, so the first one, we have Alejandra Miga.
Good.
You just tell us what.
Hi. I'm going to San Jose State next year.
And what are you going to study?
Business.
Good for you. Congratulations. And thank you. We'll just do one picture later. Lucas Stewart, Shell Co. All I do is see you singing on Facebook.
I thought you saw that. I'll be attending LMC, doing my pre-rex for nursing program, be at LMC or Napa, and possibly in the future, transfer into University of Pacific.
And that's the best way to do it. My son did all those underclasses at the lower rate.
There you go.
Very good. Congratulations. Jordan Colecord, who I just saw last week at the senior center.
Yes, you did. I'll be working full-time for the summer, earning money, so later this fall, I can go to LMC, get my classes as well as well.
I tell you, the best way to do it. Congratulations. Isaiah Duckett.
Hello. I want to get a summer job, just like some little summer cash, and I'm probably attending some classes for recording music.
Good job. And by the way, if you don't get some employment, volunteer, that looks good on your resume. Do you do this? Okay, I slaughtered it. Come up and tell me how.
It's Tullia the way is, and I'm going to go to San Francisco State for business and marketing.
He could have said it way better than me. I know my shortcomings.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Haley Hawkins.
I'll be ending Brigham Young University in Puyallup in the fall and studying psychology.
Good for you. Congratulations. Since I have one more certificate, is Mason in here? Mason Craig?
He has a higher priority with Boy Scouts.
And is he with those?
Yeah.
So, we'll give it to you too.
Yes.
So, we give that to Stewart, and he can shake your hand for it. And then let's, board members all go down, and we'll get a picture.
Oh, yeah. Mason Craig.
Let it sign, and you have to get up and down.
All right. One, two, three. One more? One, two, three. Got it.
Look at friends and and school.
Thank you.
Nancy, I don't have any public, is that correct?
Yes, as always, you can leave, and thank you for your service to us this year. Individuals to address with the board on items not on the agenda from the public, we have them. Move to individuals to address with the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. Shannon Repoli.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Repoli. I spoke at the April 20th school board meeting regarding the reassignment of Minister Gil Armenta. And I did appreciate the opportunity of meeting with Stephanie and Jessica Romeo on May 2nd regarding the issue. Stephanie, at that meeting indicated that only a board member could reopen the issue. And as you're aware, I requested that the board reopen the issue at your closed-door session. I would like to point out that Mr. Armenta and his principal, Mrs. Unida, have not been told a legitimate reason for his reassignment. And we don't believe there's just cause. And obviously, I don't know what if anything happened in the closed-door session, but I'm here tonight to express my dismay at how the decision-making process works in the district. Grant staff was not made aware of the decision to remove Armenta until it was a done deal, and district office personnel did not ask the impetus of staff members, including the principal. The initial reason given was declining enrollment, which has since proven to be incorrect. I feel that the board receives partial information and is then asked to make important decisions based on insufficient information. Often, teachers and in the community are not even aware of what decisions are being considered until it's too late. As far as I know, the only method of face-to-face communication that I have with the entire board as a group is this once-a-month, three-minute-timed, one-way, awkward and ineffective, late in the evening, close to bedtime chance. I would like the opportunity to speak directly with board members as a group using a true dialogue. This is a direct quote from the AUSD website. "The Board of Trustees is elected to represent all of the people of this school district. In making this decision, the board is guided by what is in the best interest of the entire district. My question is, how do you know what is best when you're only getting information from one source, district office personnel? That is not representing all of the people of this school district. Now that you have a full board again, or will soon, with new members as well as a potential new superintendent, I hope a method of open, transparent, and non-discriminatory communication can be established. We are a team that is here to provide the best education for our students, a team that requires contributions from all members to be successful."
Thank you. Next, we have Monte Greg. Reflection again, yes.
Good evening, Board President Gibson-Grey and the entire board, interim superintendent Stephanie Nella and all of the cabinet members, and the attendees present tonight. In the past, I needed a custom to appear before you to share a word of endings for all the district has provided, but recently, it's been a busy season, so I've neglected this opportunity. So, tonight, I wanted to share with you my reflection of the year and my hope for the future. Normally, I would just talk to you, but I have, I want to make sure I said it all, so I'm sorry, I'm going to have to read it to you. In the reflection, I am proud of the work my teachers and support staff have accomplished. The students have had more focus, the staff even stronger unity. We've danced, acted, read and dreamed, sung from our hearts, learned to play instruments, practiced our math and reading skills, decreased our suspensions, and maintained our attendance. We've included everyone and reminded students who will leave our halls that anything is possible through our college initiative. We've had great support from a part-time dedicated vice principal and the assistance of counseling and tools to help us breathe in and breathe out, and to calm ours, keep ourselves calm. And parents have continued to be an integral partner with us, and together, we have provided field trips, facilities, and materials that have opened up a whole new world for some. Next year, my plan is to bring the theme "I Leave" to our students and staff, and there is one good reason, because I believe that every woman who has integrity, determination, and desire will achieve beyond what they could dream. Next year, we will be beginning approach leading to the future four years, because having a 2020 vision is just what we need. This standards-driven approach will inspire teachers to believe in knowing themselves, students to believe in their abilities, that achievement becomes second nature. There will be a belief that nothing can stop us, a belief that technology will prepare our students for their school careers and life beyond that, a belief that even in our social circumstances, make us stronger and more unified. So, in 2016-17, I invite you, the board, to be a part of what you represent. I invite you to visit, to get out of this safe enclosure, and step into our halls, our classrooms, our playgrounds, and our world. Come and see firsthand the amazing work being done by those you've entrusted. I invite you to listen to the hearts of the teaching staff, of your administration, of your classified support staff, and especially of your students in this diverse, beautifully cultured, incredibly talented, unified district, one I fully believe in. I invite you to believe with me. I believe you will do the right thing for our children by selecting a superintendent that we believe in and that we see integrity, determination, and desire from every day, a superintendent that we call friend, mentor, and leader, and one we can trust to hold the future for our students in capable hands. I appreciate Stephanie Nella as in, because she gave us all hope for the future where belief is at the core of our work, and where our stories are steeped in love and where unity grows. And finally, I thank you for allowing me six rewarding, challenging, productive, and inspiring years as one of your leaders. Three minutes.
She's practiced. Thank you, Monte. Martha, I just, there's, it says two A, but it doesn't say the number. I'm guessing 18A? Just want to confirm before I move too far.
Resolution for action.
Okay, I just want to confirm it to her. So, you write the number, so, 18A?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. District reports. Bond over to the committee.
Yes, good evening, board. At this time, I'd like to bring up Mr. Cadell Hudson. He is the chairperson of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee to deliver his report to the board and the superintendent on their oversight of the Measure C and Measure B programs.
Thank you, Tim. Evening, board.
Welcome.
Superintendent and staff, it is a pleasure to deliver our report to you again this year. It's a good committee, committee of seven. We are short one committee member at the moment. It's a good group, and I think we have found a great fascination with the materials that have come to us on a quarterly basis. We meet quarterly. As you well know, we function under the Proposition 39, which was implemented in 2000, which required that school districts provide oversight through independent bodies called oversight committees. That's the function that we serve in a fascinating manner, and it gives us the opportunity to see firsthand the activities of our construction and improvements in the district. I'll be brief. You have received the audits of both of our bond measures, and the independent auditors have commended the district for planning, building, and construction, and the audits have found that, in fact, the districts itself have utilized efficiently and effectively the bond funds.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hayden? Thank you.
Thank you.
You two may go home.
Thanks.
Governor May revision, district preliminary budget. I assume that's you, Chris?
Yes, ma'am. I like to provide to the board and the community an update as we're in our budget development, always with an update right after the governor presents his May revision. For the audience, the governor presents his initial budget in January, and it's followed up with a May revision, which reflects really the tax revenues for, from January to April. The tax revenues aren't looking as good as they were in January, so that will begin the report. So, just briefly, the revisions, Proposition 98 actually went up a little bit, seventy, went up by $288 million, up to $7.9 billion. The local control funding formula, the gap went up to 5.4% or an additional $154 million over revenue over January. The LCFF rises to 95.7%. So, what that means is when this LCFF was first established, it was an eight-year implementation period. So, we've got a couple more years to go. We're going to 2021 is when it's fully implemented. So, all the big dollars have happened. So, I'm just letting the board and the community know, the raises or the increases in revenues are going to really level off from this point forward. The COLA, I call this the UNCOLA because it went down from 24.7% to 0%. That affects programs like special education, transportation, and child nutrition. The governor's budget includes discretionary funds, and this is an editorial on my part. It's irritating because these funds are owed to districts for mandated cost, things that we're required to do, the state is just supposed to reimburse us. But the governor likes to say, I'm going to give you that money, but I want you to use it for something else. So, he gets a two for out of the deal. That's my editorial.
And I concur. We all concur.
That was actually a $23 increase per ADA over January. And again, the funds that will be used to offset the reimbursements, and the governor would suggest using them for standard implementations. He created, or he would like to create a teacher workforce of $10 million to be channeled into universities and colleges on getting teacher, getting students interested in teaching because there's a significant teacher shortage in the state, and it maintains the $500 million in ongoing funds for the adult education block grant. And then this matrix just shows you the difference. So, 71.6 up to 71.9, the gap 49.08 to 54.84, at the COLA, the UNCOLA, 44.7 to 0, and the discretionary funds, 1.2 to 1.4 billion. So, for budget assumptions, this is very, this is kind of where we're at at this point, and we will be bringing you the budget for the public hearing. That will be on January, January, June 8th. And so, a lot of these assumptions that you're seeing here is what we're building into the budget. So, the local control funding formula is going up by $6 million for this district. That sounds good, except the majority of that money is coming from supplemental concentration. So, the $1.1 million that we're getting in the base grant isn't even enough to cover the cost that we're going to incur for the rise in Cal-Sturs and Cal-Pers pensions. So, this is a bit of a problem. It's going to be a very tight budget for 1617. The K3 through nine to 12 factors, no changes over what he presented in January. The COLA, again, what was 1.02, it's down to 0, so the less, you know, so no COLA. Lottery base, no changes. Discretionary, last, or this year, $529 for ADA, an extra $237 for ADA, down by $292. The duplicated account for this district, and this is our supplemental concentration grants, come in 70%. Seabeds enrollments, down $436, and this is because of our decline enrollment per ADA. And our percentage has gone up a little bit. So, Stephanie, you asked this question the other day, what's our P2 look like? P2, or reporting period two, last year was 94.31%. We're going in the right direction, 94.47%, but we would like to come up with ideas of how to get that to jump 5% because a percent equals real dollars back to the district. Expenditures, workers' comp is going down. That's good news. Unemployment, Social Security, Medicare, no changes. Cal-Sturs up by 1.85%. Cal-Pers up by 2.041%. Step and column, we calculated about 1%, although we'll look at that, that it might be lower than that. Medical coverage, that's what we're paying per group, per month, excuse me, per year. Other unemployment, other post-employment benefits, I think this is a good number for you to see because that is the number that we're paying employees who are no longer with us, and that's what we're paying per employee. Liability insurance is up by $74,000. Dispensals, water, gas, all that stuff is going up. The California Solar Initiative. Now, I asked me, what is that? And I totally forgot, but.
The credits back. PG&E.
Thank you. It's the credits back for the PG&E solar installation. Thanks, Tim. That's all I had. I just wanted to update you on where we are with the governor's budget and its effect on the district's 2016-17 budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Navarro?
So, you're thinking that if we improve our attendance, we will benefit the district financially if we put a plan in place to offset some of the UNCOLA and all the other stuff that the governor is doing?
That's correct. And I haven't had a chance yet to figure out what a half of a percent or 1% would be to the district, but it'll be significant dollars. If we can keep our students, you know, so we're at 100%, we could get it up to 95%, 95 and a half percent. I would say, don't get me into this, but it's probably in a million to $2 million range. So, very helpful to the district.
Do you know how we stand district-wide with other districts and?
You're not too bad. It's, it could be a little bit higher. If you'd be more average, if you were like 95 to 96%. But there are other districts that have similar demographics that are lower than you. So, you're not, you're not really bad, but we can do better, I believe.
So, let me ask another question. I know we have a lot of expenditures going out. Have you had a chance to even review all of the expenses and expenditures we have and take a look at what we can cut?
You, we had a very conversation at Stephanie's cabinet meeting yesterday. We're, we're working on that.
Okay. Because I think it's time that we take a look.
You're absolutely correct. Don't say haircut. No, I'm kidding.
By the way, if you haven't guessed, if you talk to anybody in the region who's worked with this gentleman, they say terrific things. So, that's, as you can see, this report very rigorous and very clearly stated.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you. Thank you.
I like it that it's fairly easy to understand. I like it that it's fairly easy to understand. So thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we'll move on. Public presentations, none at this time. Hearings, none at this time. Action, any requests for proposals for 403B tax shelter annuities and third-party administrative services? Mrs. Romeo, Ms. Romeo?
Thank you. First, I'd like to take the opportunity, essence Phillips was unable to be here, but she actually took the lead on something that employees have asked us to look at for quite some time. So I want to thank her for that. We have had some issues and from our employees that would like us to look at a different 403B tax annuity that has more options available and a little bit better customer service for us employees. So AgMeady was brought together, classified administrative and our teacher group, and we developed and sent out an RFP to numerous companies. Four were received. They took those RFEs and they ranked them on a variety of issues, including getting references from other school districts that were using them, the number and availability of the different vendors that we would be able to use. And they narrowed it down to two top choices, which was CalSTRS and TDS. At the conclusion of all of the reference checks and the rankings, the highest composite score was CalSTRS. So we are asking the board to approve CalSTRS as our 403B tax shelter annuity and third-party administrator services for the district.
Any comments or questions?
I can tell you that when I signed onto the board, my little $400, my little $400 before taxes, I looked at the program and said, no, absolutely not. I'm better off doing a, I'm, so it's long overdue, and I will have eight years in November. So that's how long it is for me.
Did you have a comment?
I'm just going to say that I appreciate you all taking a look at this, and I think it's important that our employees are happy, especially with getting customers serviced from, you know, the servicing group. So I see that there's no, as it says, minimal impact or minimal to no impact to the district, so.
It is, and it's actually a saving to the employee on the monthly fee.
Right.
And they might get there on time. So with that, is there a, what is the desire of the board? Is there a motion?
So.
Play the motion by Ms. Vincent, a second by?
Second.
Mr. Rulig, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for zero. Good job, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm with you on that one. Okay, consent calendar, we have no comments from the public. We do have, as always, as I'm sure up here somewhere, revisions.
And I'd like to pull item 1G.
1G as in, go. Are we going to hear it, or are you going to do it another day, or?
Would I like to?
Okay, but are you going to give us a revision? Okay, it's on the board. Okay, it's up here somewhere.
Not revision, but a memo to tell you that.
So look for that up here somewhere.
Stack of stuff, yes. Okay, earlier I had a question. You want me to just explain it, or you can explain it? I had a question on, I saw the obsolete, obsolete, you just explained it.
Okay, so Diane emailed earlier today that she saw all the vehicles on, on our obsolete list, and she was questioning, well, what is the status? What do we do with those vehicles? Do we auction them off? And it occurred to me that, and I think from my perspective, when I was looking at your consent calendar, there's a lot of pages in there, but with no notes on them. So in this case, you know, Diane was going through it, and she sees this in the agenda, but on the next page in the agenda, but nothing explaining what's going on. So I put this memo together to explain it. And then from all future items on the consent agenda, there will be a memo to, to the superintendent explaining it. Anyway, under Board Policy 3270, we're required to come to the governing board to declare things surplus or obsolete. So in this case, we list, we provided you two lists. One is a list of electronics, computers, printers, projectors, things like that. The other list is for vehicles, a mower, and a power washer. So we would, the electronics have no value, and so we would say, because there's no value, we would recycle them through the e-waste program. Vehicles do have some value, minimal value, but there is some value. And so we have a Board AR, and consistent with education code, that the district can hold a public auction, and it can be done by district employees or a consultant or a contract service. So we would go with a contract service. And so once you approve the, this tonight, you do, we would organize getting these trucks ready for auction, develop a calendar, you know, and provide the board and the community, here's a calendar when these vehicles and other equipment are available. What we do is we publish it, or we publish it or notice it at the lobby of the district office, on the district's webpage. We've put it in the Antioch Public Library on 18th Street, and we put it also on the Pruitt Library, Antioch Contra Costa Library located on Longtree Way. So a little more verification, and that's, that's what we wanted to share with the board. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, it's just the first time I noticed anything other than, and it's always amusing to read that obsolete technology, 2002, 1998. So I was reading, and then all of a sudden I come across cars and other things. So that's why I asked the question.
Right, right.
So any questions? Okay, with that consent calendar, you just want to take them all? The revisions by you, with revisions and an explanation, the business operations curriculum instruction on H human resources? All together, or do you want to do them separately?
All together.
Not so much? No. You have a question? What would you like to do separately?
A.
On A, what? On A to A?
To A.
To A. So we will pull item 2A for the discussion and vote on the rest. Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Rulig?
Second.
So before we do that, where are we? Because we're, we're covering which items, just so I'm clear.
Consent calendar with the revisions and pulling 2A.
Okay.
2A on the curriculum instruction for discussion. We'll vote on that separately.
Okay.
So the second one is by Mr. Navarro. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for zero. And now we go to item 2A. Mr. Navarro, any questions or questions?
So this is a, I guess, a course proposal for environmental projects in the community. Is there more material that we can see as to what exactly the, the, other than just the project matrix? What is exactly, what's the science that they're using? What's the underlying basis for the, for the curriculum?
So you want to come up in, since you were part of curriculum council? I haven't sat on curriculum, I'm on, right?
Maybe not.
I know.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like.
Not real loud, there you go. I haven't sat on curriculum council. Lisa Neusbaum has been leading that in absence of a curriculum director in the district. And, and also Mary Benzaguera, who's been so active with me. But anyway, these are both programs that are part of the academies, and they will go along with, as culminating activities with those academies. And so Lisa, I'll let you, because they had presentations by the schools on this.
Good evening, Board President and Board members. These are considered capstone classes, so they are the last in sequence of a pathway or academy. And as the classes have moved up in pathways, there's the need now for a course for the seniors. And that's, that is essentially where this came from, over the need arises. And so they all have a capstone that goes with their pathway. Does that answer your question? As far as what the project is, the capstone projects are kind of based on what the students choose as far as the, there are certain standards that they follow. But then if they're doing a research project, say on, for an environmental community, or checking drainage into the canal or something like that. What they'll do then is the board is responsible for collecting the information, and then as a capstone, at the end of that course, they have to present that. And they present it to business members, to the community, school board members, teachers, other students. And so that's what their purpose would be. So it's not specific necessarily, but there's an outline that they're required to follow.
And it's also based mainly on their interests after having gone through three years in that academy. And they put a proposal forward to the teacher before they began working on that proposal. And lots of times what happens with capstone projects is they have an outside person who is also working alongside of them. So they have a mentor who might be working from the community, a business person, somebody in one of the environmental agencies around the area, or.
If they related to the internships.
Okay, interesting, okay. Thank you.
One more question about this. So in reference to the internships, we're just making sure that those, do those people have to be? Students, or is that completely up to the parent permission, whoever the mentors are? Just curious about that.
Not how you do with that, it's just true. No, I do not believe that we currently fingerprint the interns, but there's parental permission, and most of the work is done at the school site under the purview of a certificated staff member.
Okay, but that piece wasn't there. Thank you.
No other questions? And motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Rulig. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Vincent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for zero. For policy, excuse me, my asthma is kicking in. 9324 minutes and recordings.
Yes, the board asked that we bring this back. We revised our policy, managed California School Association's recommendations, I think about three or four months ago. And there was, the board wanted to discuss if the new format was working, not, if they wanted to tweak it a little bit. So it's back for discussion.
Ms. Vincent, you asked for it, and I seconded to come back. So do you want to start?
Yes, so, sure. Since we've gone ahead and approved this policy, I will openly admit that I kind of wasn't really fully present with it. You know, I don't know, some of you know, my father died in January, and so slowly getting acclimated to being back into really just kind of looking at everything closely and making sure that it is within the best interest of the board. And so what I've heard is that changing the policy to just saying board members doesn't show transparency for the board, and then it's not clear who's saying what. And so it just all runs together. And so I've gotten a lot of complaints about that. I do appreciate that you provide the other comments, but as you know, Antioch is its own unique district, and, you know, I, I think that we should take a look at this policy and consider doing some revisions. I, I would say that you don't have to go word for word, but I do also feel that minutes are a legal document, and if we're covering an issue here, and we're talking about something, and, you know, it can also be used to our favor if you have a dialogue with the board members' comments on it. I don't mean word for word every detail, but I think it'd be a benefit to this district to go back to adding board members' names next to comments when we're discussing contrast, anything of interest to this district.
Any here before I go?
Yeah, and I would second Deborah's concerns that we eventually will get video recording in here somehow. I don't know how we'll do it, but it's good to have a transparency, that record of who said what, so that the community feels that there's a level of transparency that it deserves.
Okay, as the second person who wanted to be brought back, I like that the minutes are more succinct. However, using the minutes that we just proved from May 11th as an example, on page four of nine, it says, "A board member questioned the level of toxicity and harm to the district." I think if a board member is called out and then statement, you should list that board member. Other than that, and then the next page, it said, "A board member questioned," and if the supplement, it should say, "A board member." And I would guess it was board member Vincent who questioned that, just because we all know others, you know, it goes on and on. There's about four or five callouts in these minutes alone. It said, "The board member questioned是否 funds and deferred maintenance fund need to be spent." Which should say, "Board member Fernando," whoever it was. Other than that, I'm fine with the way it is. But when you call out a board member's statement, it should belong to the board member.
So, here's what I'm hearing, is that you would like us to come back somewhere in between, look at board policy, and if we don't need to revise it, fine. But when, when we state the conversation, the summary of it, we will put the name next to, instead of a board member. Is that what?
Aye.
All for, okay.
Yes, and if we do need to revise the board policy, it is my recommendation that we bring it back and make that revision, and then go through the process again to reapprove it. It's not going to be a full policy revision. It will be making an addendum to make those changes.
And then actually, if I remember the policy correctly, I think that could work in there, but I don't know. So anyway, that was my two cents on that. Because when I first saw it the next time, I went, whoa, what did we do?
Exactly.
So, thank you, board members. We will move on to the next one. Let me get back to where I was. Okay. Discussion, we have number 18, number two, resolutions for immediate action. We have Resolution 2015's authorized reduction in classified service.
In front of the board this evening is an op, is a resolution to adopt a reduction of YFTE as a registrar with our sixth grade leaving Black Diamond to go to the elementary schools. We would split a registrar between Black Diamond and Antioch Middle School because they've also had declining enrollment. So I would ask the board to approve this. When FTE, we will work with the employee, and I've contacted CSCE so that we can work with the employee to, who's ever affected, because it's truly senior, to see what other options we have available for that employee.
Any questions?
So just out of curiosity, do you have a formula for how many days the employee would be at one location and then at another?
We would be working to see whether or not it's easier to split the day. And if we do that, and I would want the principal input on that as well, because registration happens every day. So it's probably going to be easier to do a half-day, half-day, five days a week would be my guess. This is how it will end up working. Because I think it's hard for parents when they're coming to register to say, come back on Wednesday. But that's the only day we do this. So we would just have hours at each school.
Okay, so half-day at one side and half-day at another side. That would be five days a week?
Correct.
Assistant schedule?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Do you see any other implications for this?
Sorry.
I mean, any problems you foresee?
Well, I always, I always feel an implication when it affects an employee. So we will definitely be working with that employee to do our best. We have many positions open here in the district, but even if all you're doing is moving sites, it is an impact. So we'll continue to work with that employee.
And the only recommendation I would have is that it can be really challenging to go half a day here and then a half a day there. So any support that you could provide for the employee so that, you know, they feel like they are not caught between a rock and a hard place and that, you know, that there's that support there, I think that would be good. That was going to be only my two cents, is that it can be really hard. And so just make sure we're open, we're listening, we're.
Absolutely.
Any additional questions? Here I know, we do have a speaker, Martha Stiles-Gorman. Welcome.
Good evening. Madam President, members of the board, members of the superintendent, you may know. How much time do I have after I go to face and remember the task?
You can always just say, hey.
Hey, hey. It is so hard to tell, Chris, you just overused interim budget, but I have a question on this, and I want to know, is this the only position that's being eliminated and not to return?
At this time is the only position we're bringing in forward, however, I don't want to say that that's a definite, because as Mr. Lerner just pointed out, we have to look line item by line item, and see what we're gonna do on the budget next year. But one of the promises I could make, and I am, as well, is we will let CSCE know if there's any infected employees prior to coming to the board.
I guess my follow-up question is, is what about all of the vacancies that currently exist and are not filled? And how have they been filled?
We will be looking at many of those vacancies. At this point, we have not made the determination of which ones will or will not come back, but again, we will let you know as we look through the line item by line item.
So right now, but any of these vacancies falls upon the classroom staff to do basically double work. Is that correct?
Actually.
Or to do?
We are eliminating some administrative positions. We're not filling those administrative positions. We're also not filling some of our teaching positions due to declining enrollment. So it's some really hard decisions we have to make. We don't like to do it because we have relationships with individuals, but we just have to, we have to staff according to our new enrollment, and that's.
I understand that. I guess what I'm saying is that what is seen happening, and what has happened this year is that there are departments, there are school sites, that are basically been running on subs for most of the year, and that's classified. That was because these positions are not being filled. Just want to pay back to retention, and make sure that you're aware of it.
Appreciate that.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so on that one, is there a motion?
Motion.
Or a motion by Ms. Rulig?
Second.
Second by Mr. Navarro. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes four zero, and thank you for the comments. It's never easy to do that. Now, we have notice of completion for three sites. Can we just take them all once, or do we have to hear about?
Yes, you can. This is a standard practice for the thirty-five days for stop notices.
Okay, any questions of Mr.?
So the only thing I'm gonna say is, in the future, if we do any work, I'd like for us to consider the classroom first. So.
Okay.
If possible, yes.
Well, I guess like this, outside areas could be considered classroom.
True.
Yes. So like slippery seal, it's a safety thing outside.
Absolutely.
I have learned more about slowly seals than I want to know, but thank you, Mr. Lerner. So do we have a motion to take items two, B, C, and D all at once?
So moved.
Run motion by Ms. Vincent. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Navarro. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes four zero.
Long as you understand the game.
Okay, revised on number twenty-one, Board Policies for Second Reading and Action. A revised Board Policy sixty-one seventy-nine supplemental instruction with simultaneous deletion of Board Policy. Sixty-one seventy-nine supplemental instructions. Any questions?
So the only thing I would say is that we're just swapping out, we're updating.
Update, these are, we're constantly updating these policies. Questions, comments?
Just one comment, it's that I know that as a CSBA, they have certain timeframes where they release policies, and they do it on a schedule, so how far behind are we on updating the policies?
Well, that's a very good question. New kid on the block, so to speak. I've been looking at the board policies and business services, and I've been watching how we are bringing policies to board, and it, I'm not being critical, it just seems a little hodgepodge to me. So what we're planning to do, I got Stephanie's permission to work with CSBA. We are going to bring CSBA in for three days, probably in the fall, and we're gonna do all the board policies, get them all up to date, all at once. It's a three-day, well, Jessica has done it in a previous district, but you will have a complete set of very updated policies.
Okay, because I have a list of everything they released. I requested it from them.
Right.
So I'm glad to hear that we're going to take a closer look at this and make it better for the board, so we have more consistency and make better decisions.
Yes.
I would like to add the Ed Services, it's currently up to date of the things that come through. Really affect the classroom and the students, so.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, are there, do we vote on this? No, we need to vote. Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Vincent, a second by? The one is.
Second.
Which one got it? Second by Mr. Rulig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Information anticipation of future action, we have none, correct? Information items for general information, we have none. Individuals to address at the board, not the agenda, exceeded the first thirty minutes. We didn't have any. More reports from the board members, whether it's the memberships, other organizations, or the district business. I will start to my right, to my left.
So, you know, we're getting, we're winding down to the end of the school year, and so things have been very busy. I will, I always say I'm gonna keep a list, but I don't. So I participated at the Dozier Libby, the senior defense. That was wonderful to be there with the team of teachers and committee members while we listened to seniors defend their thesis at Dozier Libby, so that was wonderful. I also participated in the Antioch strolling streams, and there are students from Brentwood, Rio Vista, Antioch. I also learned that Mr. King was also a strolling member, part of the Antioch stream, so he was there last night as well, and it's just, they performed at the seniors' center, and it was exciting to see all of the students there, and they are open for hire. But I don't know if the district would ever hire you for anything, because we have our own music program, but, you know, maybe we can do some type of community concert benefit and raise money for the district, something to think about with all of our music students. I've also participated in, let's see, I went to a couple of concerts with Deer Valley. I went to one of the talent show at Dozier, and went to the sports awards at Antioch High School, and also visited the Mission Elementary. It was wonderful to see the students perform with their costumes. I think everybody is really appreciating their arts, and also had some time visiting some of the staff. And generally, I think our staff work very hard, and I also think that they're looking forward to having some time off. So I am looking forward to graduation and commend all the work that's been done to improve the graduation and rates. And I also had a chance to go to the math intensive program at Deer Valley, and I also went to the program that Parents Connected offer, and I'm in the middle of the community, always say, "Go unannounced," and so they were all very busy tutoring students, and at Parents Connected, students were testing. And so it's nice to know that those programs are operating independently, and that they are doing what they say they're going to do. So that's my schedule.
Mr. Navarro?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Rulig?
Attended Orchard Park, had a celebration the other night, which included not only one, but two concerts. And the reason for that, one was outdoors, one was indoors, and they couldn't fit everybody. So they had two different settings at different times. Like, boy, has the music program grown and prospered under Helen Bergman, yes, under Mr. Bergman. Just leaps and bounds each year, getting bigger and bigger. So it's second year now that we've had music, and it's the second year, second year, second year. So music is back, and let's hope we never have to pull the plug on it again. Because when you do, it takes years to build up, and it's just kind of yanking the chain. So by next year, it'll be even more phenomenal. And then last night, went to the English Development Learner and Graduation Ceremony, and at Antioch Middle School, and Damian Ting's group from Black Diamond Middle School played, and they are phenomenal, just phenomenal. They got a superior at the recent statewide conference, which is the highest rating you can get. So real good news in the music front. This Sunday, as a reminder, I mentioned it the last meeting, will be the baccalaureate ceremony. It dates back to medieval times, fourteenth century, very solemn. It's also joyous, but there's a solemn aspect to it. It'll be at Holy Rosary Church on Thirteenth Street, A Street, and Thirteenth, downtown Antioch. This Sunday at seven PM, always a very uplifting, inspired event, so hope you can make the baccalaureate ceremony.
Thank you.
I actually have one more comment. So I have a brochure that I will hand to probably Ruth. I understand there's a sensory room available downtown Antioch, and they only charge five dollars per hour. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So you know what it is, a community member that has a child with autism spends time there, and I was explaining that we also have a room at Eminem Grant. You should go and talk to the principal and see if you can use it. Five dollars an hour, that's pretty good.
Thank you, and in the interest of time, I would like to just tell you, future Board of Education meetings are June eighth and the twenty-second, and I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Good motion by Ms. Vincent. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Rulig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Go for it.